Good evening. I would like to call the city council meeting for October 10th, 2018 to order. You know, at this time for a moment of silence, we all obviously know we live on the Mississippi River. We know that rain is good for the crops in our community, but this also brings a lot of challenges and hardships to people. I want to first of all, as part of it, think about our great staff that protects our city from the flooding, but realizing the number of people all down the Mississippi from here and those being affected by the hurricane that's hitting and the impact that they have and how as a worldwide family, we all want to come together and find whatever support that we can provide. So with that, please a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman Dunn, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I want to welcome you all in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television are on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're here and participating in city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the city council on a specific item that appears on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business, the portion of the meeting which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and ask that you speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, again, thank you for joining us. Will and Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for September 26th, 2018? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Great, those are approved. When it turns, is our city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. Will and Alderman approve the report of the committee of the whole for October 3rd, 2018? That also has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. That is, has been approved. There are no appointments, proclamations, et cetera, for this evening. We do have one presentation however, and that will be a snow presentation and I think Nicole Gleason and potentially members of the team, but definitely Nicole, Nicole's carrying the load, showing us about. We asked this last week and I know this is all something the community likes to know about.
All right. Hello, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. Before I begin, I'm going to put in a plug for Davenport Junior Theater, Charlotte's Web this weekend and next weekend. My son's in it. It's going to be good. So this is our snow presentation. It's very similar to what we presented last year. We don't intend to make any changes. We felt what we tried last year worked well. We've been working with the crews to get their feedback. There were some growing pains, but overall, we felt it was successful. So same zones as last year, the plan is to have one large plow and one to two small plows per zone, covering first, the main routes, the snow routes. Our goal is always is to have every road within one to two turns of a snow route to ensure that emergency vehicles can get throughout the city. So first, if we're able to, again, having favorable conditions, it's not going to rain, not going to be way too cold, we do like to apply brine. This helps buy us some time before the roads start sticking to the ground. Then we remove this posted snow routes. And then finally, if it's not expected to melt, we then go into the non-snow routes. And this is just what the pre-treatment looks like. We get a lot of questions when we start putting it down, what are the lines all over the road? So that's kind of what it looks like. And then this is around $3,400 for us to do on our cell routes. If we have four inches or more of accumulated snow, that's when we do our actual removal of the snow from downtown. We did have to do this once or twice last year. We luckily didn't have a major, major event, but it will happen a couple of days after the event because we do want to ensure all the neighborhoods and things are clear first. The big challenge here is our vibrancy of our downtown has created extra cars, more of a parking challenge. We do now get complaints from the residents, it's too loud, why are you doing this in the middle of the night? So, you know, there's give and takes with everything, but this is the same plan as that we'd had in years past. And then we do basically the night, the day before, we start putting the snow in those curb lines and then overnight, we remove it from the curb line. So that's just kind of a visual of where the snow ends up. Parking, we did excellent last year with actually getting out, ticketing, making sure we got the word out to sign up for snow alerts to avoid parking on emergency posted routes during events, primarily when we think there may be an excessive amount of snow or ice that's going to make it particularly dangerous or difficult for us to remove snow. We do declare that emergency and ask that no one parks on those emergency posted routes. It helps us with efficiency and also it helps us prevent damage to vehicles. Let's see, so there's a picture of why it can help if we don't have cars on the street. As a reminder, driveways, sidewalks, it's really important, especially in the school zones and the bus zones, those are the ones we focus on first when we go to abatements. We go to those school and bus areas, but we do ask that everyone get out and remove the snow as quickly as possible. If you have challenges removing snow, we do have our Snow Angel program that you can contact Public Works to sign up for. And then it is not legal to push your snow into the street. This is considered littering. Snow can be littered. If we catch you doing it, we can fine. And we just really encourage everyone to sign up for these text alerts. That's the best way to find out if there's going to be a snow emergency declared and what parking options there might be. So, that's all I got. Any questions?
Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I know everybody's excited to think about snow. My question is, you guys did a great job last year of making that communication in regards to, so people could sign up for the texts and all that good stuff. Are you going to be doing something similar again this year? Are you just thinking that everybody's pretty well set?
We'll do the normal Facebook communications and whatnot and then for the downtown in particular, I know Rich and the parking team are planning to do some door-to-door communications because that's a little bit of a larger challenge. Last year, we also, on the first event where we didn't think we were going to have to ticket, we did a couple of the heavier zones with some notices on the cars on how to sign up. So we may try to do a little bit of a combination of that depending on what we see.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
J.J., Alderman Condon, please.
You mentioned snow being pushed into the street by a citizen is not allowed, which I understand. You also mentioned that the downtown's becoming more vibrant and in an area like that, it's difficult to know where to go with the snow because there is no green space. I wonder if we could organize a little bit better so that people know when to clear their sidewalks so that it might get picked up by the plow or what's your thoughts on that?
For downtown, we do offer and we will again this year, we give them all the businesses letters at the beginning of the snow season and we offer that if they want to remove the snow and put it down by our Marquette Street location, we will offer their contractors can actually move the snow off-premise. That's the best option we really have just because, as you said, there's really no place for it to go. If they push it in the street, it's probably going to end up right back on their sidewalk at this point.
Okay. I would, I appreciate that they can haul it away. I wonder out loud if we could think of a more strategic way to work together since the heavy equipment's going by anyways, but maybe something we could think about.
Great. Alderman Clul.
Thank you for the presentation, Nicole. I think for Public Works and the rest of us, safety is always job one. But the environment, of course, is not unimportant and as a vibrant city, I wonder what we're doing to reduce the amount of salt. I know that you can't talk about a baseline and where we're going from year to year because of the variability of the weather, but is there any attempt to try to educate the public and to reduce the amount of salt which ultimately must be going into the Mississippi River?
We do honestly at each event, look at the amount we're putting down per lane mile. So we try to keep it to a minimum depending on the duration of the event. But yeah, absolutely, it's going to be event-specific and we can look at doing some more outreach as to when and why we do and don't use salt during certain events.
So kind of like farm equipment where they're now calibrating the amount of pesticide going onto the field, you're able to do that with the trucks as well?
Yeah, we can go anywhere. We can say if it's going to be a light snow or we know it's not going to last long, we could say only put 100 pounds per lane mile versus maybe 300 if we know it's something that's really going to stick and be hard to cut through. Yep, we do dial it down each way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Matson.
Thank you, Mayor. And to go on that, we used to just run the salt and run the salt trucks and it just dumped everything. And now they decide when they go and when they don't go and it only goes on certain spots that are really rough. So we've evolved. It's good that we keep doing, keep attention to that, but we used to just throw it and now we, you have a good idea. I just wanted to say that over the many years I've been here, the evolution of snow removal and the working together with different places and really helping the residents and the residential areas is so much better than it used to. So thank you and keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. And just before I recognize Alderman Dickman, you know, it's again to you and your whole department, this is another one of those there, how it's gotten so, it improves and improves and more and more professional because we have flooding going on and I've heard from so many people saying, wow, you can know how to deal with that in this city. So thank you for all those initiatives as well, as well as this. Alderman Dickman, please.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to give you an opportunity to plug the Snow Plow Tracker and the YourGov app if people are interested in knowing where and when the plows are coming to their streets.
Right. So we do have GPS on the truck so we can tell you when they have and haven't been down the street. We don't have that live on the website, but through YourGov, if you feel like your street hasn't had the attention it's deserved, please, you can submit it either by calling Public Works or by submitting it online. And when we are in the middle of an event, Public Works has staff 24/7. You know, you may have to wait depending on the volume of the calls, but we do have someone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on and thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
That's great. Great job. Thank you. Our next item is, are there any petitions or communication by any of my colleagues tonight? Alderman Matson.
Thank you again, honor. I just want to say thanks to Chad and Alderman Gripp and the full house we had at Public Works and Dale was there too, I shouldn't, for quality control, I guess. We had a great discussion, great meeting with four coustha bike-riding folks and the trails that are going to be put or proposed to be put in around the Marquette Dog Park and in the woods there. And we came to a basic agreement that Chad and the city and the parks, his staff will work with them to come up with an agreement to make this all fair. And a lot of people got a lot of information and understood what we're talking about now. So thank you, folks.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. Wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow at 6:00 PM, I'll be having a second ward meeting at Truman Elementary. The convention, Quad City Convention and Visitors Bureau will be there. The public relations and marketing manager will be doing a presentation and also there will be an opportunity to meet the new CEO, Dave Harrell. So definitely come by if you are interested in anything tourism-related. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce an upcoming neighborhood meeting going to be held this Friday, the 12th. The residents out in Lakehurst, HOA have expressed some concern about security, crime in the neighborhood and there were a number of requests for that. And so I decided to go ahead and hold a neighborhood meeting. Sergeant Harris from the police department is going to be participating in that. It's going to be at 5:30 this Friday at Public Works Building. So it's primarily for Lakehurst folks, but if you have an interest in security in your neighborhood and you're somewhere in that area, feel free to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just a reminder that the third ward meeting for October is Saturday, October 13th at 10:00 AM, Cedar Memorial Christian Church, which is at 310 Cedar Street on the west side. We don't have a guest, so we'll be talking about urban revitalization and answering other questions that attendees have, so hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a few other items I just wanted to share. One, I was at the fire station, Central Fire, the other day and the outpouring for the memorial stone for Chief Mike Hayman. You know, it is always special when you come in those settings and see the brotherhood and sisterhood of all of the firefighters, but also from around the whole community, from other cities, all came to be part of that ceremony. So Chief, you did a great job with that ceremony. To that end as well, I know we haven't forgotten Lieutenant Cakert either and there's creating a foundation to continue with the work that he's doing. So we'll hear more about that at something in November, I think is the next event to deal with that as well. Also, Thursday evening is the Creative Arts Academy, a big event they're having in the evening down at the Adler Theater, kind of a celebration. Another one of those unique things of Davenport that we've got people open and rolling from around the region to be part of that. So let you know about that. 10:30 on Saturday morning, LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, is having their military salute down at Veterans Memorial Park area. And it's a very moving ceremony. There'll be general officers from the arsenal as well as a number of others who will be there to, and they actually take, as a remembrance, take a wreath and actually put it in the Mississippi as part of that event and it's a very solemn event with that. Also, at 4 o'clock on Saturday is the Main Street Library Celebration. It sounds like a lot of fun. Even more fun that you can have at the library, which is usually a lot of fun, but metro youth dancing group, there's bands, there's music, there's food, and there's a lot of things celebrating the history and the celebration of that fine institution. It's really critical to our community. I was with a developer today for lunch and he said, every one of the developers that he's worked with over the, I mean, individuals coming to do development, one of their top questions is the library system. And I, and you realize that they want to know how that really stacks up, how the community supports their citizens. So Amy and your team, thank you for that. The Figgy has their French Moderns exhibit and I was down there today and the amount of traffic that's bringing, this is one of those things you have to go to usually to Chicago for or some other place. It's right here in our community. So take advantage of it while you're here. And lastly, Alderman Clul brought up, obviously, the concerns about juvenile justice and criminal crime issues. The Center for Juvenile Justice Planning, we should be receiving their report near the end of the month and there will be some action steps out of that. But I think it's important to understand that this isn't, and we've been repeatedly saying it a lot, this isn't something pointing to the city, what are we going to do about it? It literally is, what are we going to do about it as a community and a larger community? The county, the cities, and all of us as individuals. So we're looking to move that forward and be proactive as that as we go on. So thank you all very much. And next, we're going to move on to individual items of approval for the discussion agenda. We have a second consideration and ordinance amending multiple chapters located within Title VIII, Health, Safety, and Neighborhood Enhancement of the Davenport Municipal Code for purposes of clarification and consistency with enforcement. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk to that issue? Seeing none, is there any Alderman that would like to talk about that? Seeing none as well. Will and Alderman move second consideration of the ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
10 yeses, your honor.
While the committee of the whole recommended suspension of the rules in passage on second consideration, do I have a motion for suspension of the rules? It's been moved and seconded, which is a motion for the third consideration. Motion to suspend.
Need a roll call.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Matson.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
10 yeses, your honor.
That is now been moved forward. And our second item is a motion for approving the liquor license renewal for Shenanigans. Here We Go Again Incorporated at 303 West Third Street. Is there any public with business on this item? Before we do that, I'm going to ask our city attorney, Mr. Warner, to come up.
Thank you, your honor.
Do a little bit of information as we mentioned last week.
As was requested at committee of the whole, I requested of the club's counsel, Mr. Malloy, that he tell his client that either his client or his representative, and it appears Mr. Malloy's here for that, come and talk to the council about a particular issue. We've had two incidents in the downtown in the last five months that involve a provocation inside the club that then gets outside a shenanigans and turns into a shots fire call. The first one was on or about March 11th at approximately 12:32 AM. And the most recent was on or about August 18th at approximately 1:32 AM. Obviously, having shots fired is serious and it's more serious, or it could even be more dangerous downtown as people are exiting bars. So it's important to hear from the club, I think, for council to get some assurance perhaps of what they're trying to do to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Good evening, Mayor, Davenport City Council. My name is Michael Malloy. I represent Here We Go Again Inc. regarding this liquor license renewal. I received an email from Corporation Counsel asking me to address the security measures that Shenanigans has in effect at their particular bar. We're here to tell you that Shenanigans employs multiple security personnel daily at the entrance and exit of this building. Personnel enforce procedures for checking IDs and searching patrons upon entry. An electronic device is used at the front door to scan any patron coming into the building. This particular device will activate if anyone is carrying a metallic object. Any person carrying any metallic object is refused entry into Shenanigans. We have actively policed the location of the Shenanigans Bar like this for the past three years. Does the council have any questions?
Alderman Ambrose.
I have a question for our police department. Not for you. Police department.
Sergeant Mark Berger.
Can you briefly explain what happened on both these occasions?
On the first occasion, the March 11th incident involved a subject who had pointed a weapon inside of the bar with a laser light at another subject. The disturbance ended up going outside where some shots were fired as they were moving down towards the parking ramp. On the second occasion, there was a disturbance between two male subjects on the dance floor. From there proceeded again back towards the parking ramp where there were some shots fired back in the parking ramp.
All right. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. If you could, yeah, I'm probably going to have some questions of you, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't want you to have to back and forth. I did ask, you know, this bar is in the third ward, part of the area that I serve and so I did ask the police department over the last week for a list of incidents from November 1st to October, November 1st, 2017, October 5th, 2018. I was curious, there is a, you know, there are a group of bars in this area and there are also other parts of the city downtown clustered around Third and Brady where there are a group of establishments. And what I, you know, in looking at these, I find, you know, calls for service can be calls that are asked for. So if it's, you know, please check on my establishment. So those are not necessarily a problem. That's actually positive sometimes, some people are doing that. So what I, what I'm looking at is particularly disturbance nuisance calls. And in the area of Brady and West Third, which are, I'm sorry it's taking me a while, but I've got to go through this, The Office, Vans, Pizza, Analog, Booze's, and Crew, the disturbance list goes from one incident in this time, which is almost a year, to seven in the year of disturbance. So seven instances. And so that's a fairly small number. When I look at the, I looked at also the establishments near, around Third and Harrison, which is Max, Kell Kenny's, Carriage House, and Shenanigans. Again, in this particular, this kind of disturbance nuisance or violence type thing, there's two at Max and I see Shenanigans has 28, which seems like an extraordinary number given the low number that we saw just a block away. And that concerns me very much. My question to you, sir, if you can answer it, in terms of the police reports, the one in March, which dealt with guns, with gunshots, and suspect was, had pointed a laser, the laser sight at someone in the club and then left and the shooting pursued, and I think we've all heard that story. And then the one in August where there was also a gun, how often in a downtown drinking, eating establishment are guns a part of what you're dealing with? I'm not talking about just on the street, but how often does that happen downtown where you're called because there's an issue with a gun?
There's obviously, there's times where we have shots fired that occur downtown at bar close. Sometimes we can attribute it in direct link back to location. Sometimes as the patrons leave, they go to their vehicles and the weapons may be in their vehicle and then the disturbance can disrupt from there. How often, I would, you know, it varies.
Is it a rare occurrence or?
It's, I can tell you, we spend, I mean, every Friday, Saturday night, as long as staffing is allowed, it allows it. And with the calls for service that are out there that are waiting, we have officers that go down for bar close to try to keep the peace while we're down there and make sure that there are not any disruptions. They can still occur, but there are many nights, there are those nights where there isn't anything that happens, which is the best solution. Everybody leaves, having a good time.
How many reports like this would you estimate in a year?
Well, and looking at, without having that number specifically on me, I might be able to give you a specific number.
Okay.
Obviously, the biggest ones are probably the two scenarios.
At this location.
The ones that we talked about.
Okay, at this location. Okay, I had another question about an incident on July 29th, which is a, it was a, described as a, by one officer, as a scrum. Alerted to a large disturbance outside of Shenanigans Bar, we could see a large group of approximately 10 subjects actively fighting on the ramp outside the western door. Approached, the large fight seemed to be growing in size as more subjects from inside of the bar joined in. There were several females struck repeatedly falling in the group. Due to the number, and this was BIC's weekend, the number of involved people, the active disturbance and the level of violence being used in the disturbance, it was determined that an immediate end needed to be brought to the fight. And then there was OC dispersed by the police department, which seemed to sort of end the active, you know, then the people began to disperse as well. How often, my goodness, that's really something. On our str-. How often, my goodness, that's really something, on our streets downtown, wow. How often do you, does the police department have to use, again, a bar, restaurant closing downtown? How often in the last year have you had to use OC on people leaving to get them to stop doing whatever they're doing that's not appropriate?
It can, I mean, again, I can't give you a specific number. There are occasions where it happened. Basically, the officers will use their discretion to determine if that's the best course of action to disperse the crowd and get things moving along, especially when you have a large crowd that is erupting, trying to get control of that situation, causing the least amount of harm spraying that OC into the air.
Right.
Obviously, they have to pay attention to a lot of, there's a lot of factors that come into play there.
Sure.
Wind direction, things of that nature that they try to play, pay attention to. But there are those occasions where it can occur.
So is this frequently done?
I wouldn't say frequently, no.
Okay, so again, you don't have any idea of how often, but rare?
Less than, I would say, it is rare that it happens. Usually, you can get control of things without having to go to that extent.
Okay, all right. Listen, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you. Officer Berger, I don't think I have anything, so, for you. But, and Mr. Warner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have been discussing this establishment for years and going back previous to Mayor Clippes' time. Yourself, my, me, Mayor Gluba, and others have had meetings with the owners and tried to work out security concerns and other concerns. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Yes, and we've tried to work this out for, well, prior to Mayor Clippes, so at least six years? Five years?
I can't remember how long.
But prior to Mayor Clippes' time, so that's significant.
Prior to Mayor Clippes, it's close in time to when they opened.
Right, exactly. We've been doing this for a long time to try and work these out, try and discuss, try and come up with better safety, security issues, right? So we've had previous city actions to try and adjust things and talk with the state on. We've had times where we've had, and I know of a couple incidents where most of our squad cars that were on the street had to respond to an incident. Obviously, that's a concern for the rest of the city where everybody, our police, all the squads have to respond to that because it's such a big deal. So the security concerns for the other city, because we have one place where we have to send everybody, is a concern. And we've been hearing about the crowds coming out of there and going to the ramps. That's been going on for quite a while. So we have been trying, in my opinion, to work this out, trying to deal with this in many different ways. And it's still, as Ms. McGinnis has said, and obviously, we've watched and saw, things are still going on. So at least from my perspective, this is, this is getting to a point where we do need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you, thank you, officer. A couple of questions that I have. One is in regards to, so I was on public safety previously with Alderman Mattson. And so we know, I'm aware that we work with several different establishments throughout the city. And when there's some concerns about an event or a previous event, what are they going to do so that it doesn't happen again? So my question is, as you work with other establishments, what are your recommendations? What certainly works, you know, we've seen things work. So what are we missing here? Just off the top of your head, what are some things that could make some improvements?
And just looking at it and then being down there for me, you talk about security staff. What background's been done on the security staff? Have they been checked for criminal records, things of that nature? Who are their involvements, you know, as far as anytime you're going to do an employment? I mean, you should probably do some type of employment background to verify they have the background to do that, that job. You can, security cameras, things of that nature that can be put in place, good quality. You know, it's different, some of you got to look at sometimes, get into what the procedures are, and every establishment can be different. So going in and actually, I work up on crime prevention, we actually can go out and do a security audit, do a survey, make recommendations to, to that establishment, any business, on ways to better improve their security.
Has this business in particular requested that service?
I do not believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Outside of that, I guess the other thing would be is if you're having issues with people, the other, especially in an establishment like this, if you have a situation where you had to remove somebody or things of that nature, then you'd probably want to trespass them or ban them from that business so they do not return.
So there's certainly several opportunities to resolve some of these issues. Okay, thank you. I just have one more question for Mr. Warner. Can you please share with us, because this has been ongoing, what are our options at this point?
Well, it's up for a renewal if the council feels that it's a public safety issue and that the, essentially, the club is not taking steps to alleviate the situation. You can deny it. They will be allowed to continue to operate. They can appeal it to the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division in Ankeny, and they'll decide whether they can continue with their license or not. So at the end of the day, the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division decides whether they're able to operate. And, and we have had a couple of actions up there asking for sanctions against Shenanigans. And the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division has denied us both times. They seem to fall back on the notion that they do not knowingly allow these things to happen. So in other words, they didn't know the person was going to show up with a gun and start a disturbance and then shoot, which is, to me, too high of a standard, but that's the standard they employ.
And how long does that process take? Just curious.
Well, the appeal on this matter will probably happen somewhere between, if you deny it, it'll probably happen somewhere between 30 to 60 days. And then it'll be 30 days after that, there'll be a proposed decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to you, Alderman McGinnis. Let a couple of those have a first shot first. Alderman Rosson?
Thank you. Few questions, actually, for Mr. Malloy. If you would, Mr. Malloy, step up to the podium. You may not have the answers to some of these, but I'm curious, based on Mr. Berger's comments, you had said something about there's security at the door with a wand that detects metal. What's the numbers for the security, especially on Friday and Saturday? What's the minimum number the establishment requires to be on site?
The numbers for the security are four security individuals at the front door, as well as six security individuals inside the premises.
So 10 total?
That's correct.
That's the minimum number that's required?
Minimum number.
That's the minimum number?
Required by what?
That's the standard number that the owner has on site on any given weekend?
Yes, that's the standard number.
10 security?
Yes.
Are there, are there background checks done on the security personnel? Do you, are you aware?
I'm not aware of specific background checks on security personnel.
Okay. Are you aware of the number of or location of security cameras on the premises?
Yes, there are security cameras on the premises every time, every hour the establishment is open.
Okay, how many cameras are there?
I believe there's one or two. I don't know which one.
Do you know where they're located?
No, I do not.
Do you, are you, do you have any idea? Because the police department does do a really great inspection on site. I've had it done at my house. They come out and walk through and tell you what you're doing really well, and they tell you what you can improve on. Is there any reason why we haven't, we haven't done that for Shenanigans yet?
I can't answer that question. You'll have to ask the police department that.
And the last question I have, are you aware, have there been any trespass or, what was the other word? Bans issued against patrons, like legally?
I don't have information on that.
Okay, thank you.
But I do want to address this March 11th, 2018 shooting incident that was brought up tonight because the email I received from Corporation Council spoke specifically about a particular incident in August. Now, I'm sure the mayor and council are aware that the city of Davenport filed a license suspension action against Shenanigans in June of this year. And on July 27th of this year, we had an evidentiary hearing before an administrative law judge of the Iowa Department of Commerce Alcoholic Beverages Division. Witnesses were sworn in, including police officers Gavin Tickus, Brendan Askew, and Brandon Noonan. And we also submitted testimony from our security personnel at the hearing. And I want to read to you what the administrative judge concluded on this particular attempt to suspend the liquor license of Shenanigans. Quote, "In the present case, the evidence showed that Shenanigans employed personnel at the entrance and exit of the building. The personnel enforced procedures for checking IDs and searching patrons upon entry. Additional staff monitored patrons as they exited the building. There is no evidence in the record that attributes the March 11th, 2018 shooting incident to any failure on the part of the licensee, of course, that's Shenanigans, or the licensee's employees to supervise the premises. Accordingly, the evidence in the record does not support a finding that the licensee permitted illegal activity on the premises in violation of Iowa Code Section 123.492J. The undersigned administrative law judge knows of no other violation that could conceivably be attributed to the licensee based upon the evidence submitted in the record." So I'm thinking, I think you're getting some factually incorrect information regarding Shenanigans as far as their operation in the premises. And I have copies of this eight-page administrative ruling. I'll give the clerk for your review if you'd like to read that. This decision was issued by the administrative law judge on August 28th of this year. City of Davenport had 30 days to appeal this if they so chose to appeal this decision. They did not appeal this decision, so of course, it's now a final decision. And I think if you take the time to read this decision, it will illuminate some of the issues that you are asking questions about tonight, as well as the security at the bar. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. I think we have Alderman Klul.
I do have a question for you, Attorney Malloy. I do want to thank veteran council members for their contextual view of what's going on here and Alderwoman McGinnis for doing the deep dive in your ward on this issue. Certainly, if numbers speak, I speak very loudly in this issue. My question for you is, what actions has the organization taken since these incidents to preclude it from happening again? You mentioned a number of things that they have in place. How many of those were put into place as a result of these incidents?
All of those particular actions, including the electronic security device at the front door, the padding down of patrons who enter the premises, have been in effect for the past few years, probably three to four years. There's nothing new that they instituted in that regard. They've been there, they've done that, and they have actively continued doing that every day the establishment is operating.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give Alderman Grip a first shot at this questioning first. Alderman Grip?
Thank you. No questions, just a couple of statements. So we all know our downtown has come a long way, and it's now, you know, the center entertainment district in our city. And it's, the downtown is viewed as a safe place to be, the place to be, and we want to keep it that way. And in order to keep it that way, we need good business partners and good neighbors downtown. And we ask everyone who operates a business, especially an establishment that serves alcohol, to be good neighbors and keep our downtown safe. And in the past three years, continually, this establishment comes up as an establishment that is not being a good neighbor. And in spite of some of the precautions they say that they've taken, we still continue to have more issues there than we have in other places. And I think when you talk about raising concerns to the state of Iowa, I think we as a council have to continue to raise those concerns to the ABD to let them know that these issues are not going away. If we don't raise our hand and tell them that we're having issues, and we throw our hands up and say, "The state isn't going to do anything," in fact, they will not do anything. So whenever there are issues, we have to take them to the state, and they can rule as they will, but we won't be silent and just let these things happen in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to get everybody to have one chance first. Alderman Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just offer an opinion about this. I can see this bar from my front step, and I've been to this bar. Went there when I was a younger man, and not too long ago, I went in there just to feel things out, and I had a fine time. So I do want to illustrate the point that a problem bar isn't necessarily what you imagined. This isn't something with a slotted door or, or something that you feel uneasy about as you walk by. And yet, you can run an establishment 90% of the time with no problems. That 10% of the time still matters. And the attitude seems to be that because these incidents happen just outside your front door, that it's not your problem. And just by the nature of serving alcohol, the things that happen outside your door, almost by definition, do concern you. And if this was something that was happening in my establishment, I would want to be an active partner in seeking a resolution. I'm just discouraged that the operators aren't here to answer questions, aren't willing to partner with our community, aren't willing to partner with the police. And my initial instinct was not to come down too hard on the folks, because I know that you can't be responsible for the actions of other people. But just by the failure to come here and communicate, I'm more inclined to not recommend a renewal.
Thank you. We have, everybody's had one shot. I'll go around the horn again if people have some additional comments. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, as, as Alderman, where this built, this bar is, I have heard, I can't count the number of times where, in dealing with people who have businesses downtown, that I, that I frequent, or in meetings with people with businesses saying, "What are you going to do about this?" I can barely go in a business sometimes, especially after another thing has happened where, and I, and places that are nearby that have had people associated with other, other establishments that have had, you know, their car shot at, things like this. It's, it's, you know, this is our fastest growing neighborhood. Downtown is our fastest growing neighborhood. My husband and I have frequented downtown for the last 21 years. We have gone to the restaurants, we've gone to the bars to have dinner. We live near downtown, and we were on the streets when there wasn't anybody but us on the streets, basically, sometimes, because those are local businesses, as is Shenanigans, and we want to see them succeed. There's not a lot of chains downtown. And so we, I really want to see this successful. As a resident, I observed, without knowing anything about this establishment at all, but going to nearby places, had several instances where I encountered people who were at that bar who were extremely inebriated. It happened just two- It happened just two weeks ago. We pulled up in our car, the only place to park was in front, and I'll swear, as we pulled up, two men were dragging a man out who clearly could not walk, and this was at 7:30 at night, coming out of Shenanigans, completely inebriated, and I really didn't have time to call the police, or I would've, put him in a car, thankfully not in the driver's seat, I don't think. So, it's like, it's become almost a magnet for me, it seems. I don't look, go looking for this. And then I have the people talking to me about this. It's disturbing to me to hear that these protocols apparently have been in place, according to what we heard tonight, but in fact, these events have taken place in less than a year with guns. It's disturbing to hear that we're having to use crowd control devices to break up fights on the street. It is something that, no matter what an administrative judge says, that we have to, as a council, I can in good conscience say, "Yeah, these people need to have a license." Just because our state is not supporting us in this, because the agency that is, the state agencies that are responsible for this is not doing its job, or a commission is not doing its job, we can't sit here as, I can't sit here as a council person and say, "Well, I guess we just have to let this one go." So, I cannot support this, and I will not be supporting this tonight.
Catch up on my numbers here. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor, for a second chance. Just a couple of things in addition that drew concern from what I just heard. So, 10 security person, personnel. I appreciate security, but for an establishment to have to have 10 security personnel on any given night, that tells me something. As a retired military person who was engaged in many type of things, that we have weapons with lasers in bars being pointed at people is a concern. And if we've been having our security work for years now and warn people, how are they getting in? Obviously, the security's not working. I'm not asking a response. These are concerns that I'm hearing, and if the security is working, I mean, weapons with lasers are being used in bars and being pointed at people when security's supposedly doing their job. And for Mr. Warner, if you go to the Ankeny again, please invite us. I would be happy to go and take a free day off of work and plea, and talk to them, and I mean, all of us, let's get, and explain our concern here, if they need to hear from us. I'm happy to do that. But I'm very concerned that these things are going on, and that, at least for me, and I know others on this council, as Ms. Tompkins said, we've been talking to folk, we've been trying. And I agree with everything Alderwoman, Alder, sorry, Alderman Grip said. This is our job, and Alderwoman McGinnis, this is our job. If somebody overrules us, that's part of life, but we need to do something. Thank you.
Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor, for a second statement. I just wanted to clarify, because there seems to be some misinformation. The Police Department does not just show up at people's doors to search and provide some services. It is up to the owner or the homeowner to reach out to the Police Department and request that service. So, as we've all shared, I would just reiterate, I hope that that is done, and that they're a partner in trying to make some improvements and see what we can do to make some changes. So, just to clarify, that's how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Rawson.
Thank you for a second. I just had a couple of comments somewhat echoed by Alderman Grip and Mattson, and that I was just listening to everybody, and I'm, I find myself alarmed that there was a patron that managed to get past the wand at the front door and brandish a weapon and pointed at somebody inside the establishment. If nothing else, that alone indicates there's something wrong with the protocols in place. And my biggest concern is, do we have to, do we have to keep playing the song and dance of, "We have you here every year to talk about this," although the owners didn't show up tonight, so thank you for that. I did request them to be here. It would've been nice to have them here. Is it going, is it going to take someone actually getting shot for something different to be done, to tighten up security? I'm hoping that is not the case. So, but I do agree with what many of my colleagues have said. We are paying attention, and we're gonna keep on top of it. Thank you.
To that end, will an Alderman move the motion? It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion from any of the Aldermen? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Rawson?
No.
Dickman?
No.
Mattson?
No.
Grip?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
No.
Tompkins?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Ambrose?
No.
Condon?
No.
Ten no's, Your Honor.
This motion did not pass, so we will move on from there. And the next is the approval of all the items on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
No.
Oh, what?
I apologize, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Grip? McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rawson?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions this evening? Is there any public with business this evening?
Michael Malloy, attorney for Here We Go Again. I wasn't provided a final opportunity to respond to any of the comments by the City Council, so I want to respond to a couple of the comments. First of all, we got an email from the city attorney requesting that the council would like to hear from the owner or representative of the owner. Of course, I am here tonight as the attorney and the representative of the owner. Mr. Davidson is not available to attend this meeting tonight because of prior commitments, and there was no request that both he and a representative or his attorney be present at this particular meeting. Secondly, regarding the issue that Alderman Rawson brought up about a patron brandishing a weapon inside the premises, there is no concrete evidence to support that allegation. And you will find nothing in the record in this case that says that anyone has ever been in the interior of Shenanigans with a weapon. That is an incorrect statement. It is hearsay, and as I said, we already had a hearing on one of these alleged incidents before an administrative law judge, an objective impartial judge from the Iowa Alcoholic Beverage Commission, who found that there was no evidence to support any kind of allegation like that. In closing, I would remind the mayor and the city council that there are eight other liquor establishments within a three-block radius of Shenanigans. And what the city council or the Police Department appears to be doing is attempting to blame Shenanigans for any incident on the public right-of-ways, in the public parking lot that occurs in downtown Davenport. This particular incident that I was called here to address tonight involved an incident at the parking ramp, specifically on Ripley Street. There were no arrests made. There was no evidence of any shots fired, according to the police report, and the police were offered the security videotape from Shenanigans of the incident, and they declined to take it. So, in closing, I would remind the council that you need to hear the full story on this matter and not bits and pieces that you want to use in an attempt to take away the license of Shenanigans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the public who would like to address this issue?
Your Honor, we've, this is a...
No, not on that issue, just generally one of other public.
Well, if we want to move forward to the report of the, if there's no other public...
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Are there any other public who want to come up and address the council? And I don't see any, so therefore, we're gonna move on. Is there any other reports of city, of public officials? And here we have one.
This is Mallory Hoyt. She's one of the attorneys in my office. Since Mr. Malloy said that there was no evidence of any shooting on August 18th, I think we can address that.
He makes it around. He's going to jail. Hey, guys, is that, has he got a problem with one of you guys? No? Okay. If he comes running around here, he's gonna go. 17, we got shots fired. Sounds like it came from Ripley Street, west of the ramp. Who was it? Did you see? Did you see?
17, we got a couple cars flying up ramp. Don't know if they're involved.
Thank you, Mallory. Thank you, Your Honor, for letting us.
Are there any other reports of any city officials?
Moving to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.